All right, welcome to the October 27th, 2025, Twalton City Council Work Session. First up, we have our Parks and Trails Project Update, and I believe I see a few people in the audience.
Good evening, Council President Pratt and members of council. My name is Justin Shul. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director here in Twalton, and joining me tonight is Kira Heine, our project manager, and she's going to walk you through our bonds and project update for this kind of fall quarter. Lots of really fun, exciting things going on currently, and then a little sneak peek as to what's to come at Twalton Community Park, so.
Good evening, council. I'm excited to be here this evening and just update you on how the progress are going since last April. It's been six months, and so we've made a lot of progress since then, so excited to keep you updated on what's going on. And so, as you know, the Parks Trail and Bond, there are six areas that it funds. And so, we have the Trail Connections, the River Access, the Athletic Field Improvements, upgrades, natural areas, and play equipment. And so, what I like to call the big three, the three remaining, we have obviously the Trail Connections, the Riverfront Park, and then the Athletic Fields. And then, before I get too into detail regarding the projects, I just wanted to reiterate, these are the avenues of communication that we've been using to keep the community updated. And so, if for some reason you don't, you aren't getting any of these that you've signed up for, please reach out to us tomorrow sometime later this week, and we can get you updated and making sure you're getting everything you need. And so, we have the Niobruck Creek Trail Connection, and so that is east of I-5, and it will go from Sagert to 65th Avenue. And then, of course, we have the Future Riverfront Park, so it's that big blue sign off of Boone's Ferry across from the City Library. And then, we have the Athletic Field Investments along with the Tiger Twalton School District Partnership remaining left of the Parks and Trails Bond. So first up, we have the Niobruck Creek Trail. And so, what is really great about this location is that the interconnection between Peters Park with Rolling Hill Apartments and that neighborhood over there, and then because this is a two-part trail, this is phase one of that eventual two-part trail connection. And so, the photo to the upper-left hand, so that is the excavation work done right behind Rolling Hills and Orchard Hill Condos. So the right is where the condos and apartments are, and the left side with those straw waddles on the left, you will overlook the wetlands there. And then, the bottom-left-hand side, we have a photo of the view from 72nd, so the side of, the site entrance of Orchard Hill Condo, and if you're looking up to Sagert Street, that is that trail path there. And so, we actually did our first concrete pour last week, so fast, fast and going right there. And so, it is an eight-foot-wide path, and it's a local trail, not a regional trail. And so, it'll be all concrete, it'll be three-quarters of a mile long, and so, this went under construction at the beginning of September. And so, for us to be able to have our first pour last week, and with our second pour actually scheduled for this Thursday, is a really great feat. And so, Nutter Core was the awarded contractor for this project, and we have been happy working with them so far, and they know what they're doing, just with their similar background in roads. And then, the bottom-right-hand photo is, we put up these banners. Our office assistant, Bella, she makes these really beautiful banners for us for each project in English and Spanish, and it just gives a briefing of what the project is, what are the amenities of them all, and it just, you know, has our logo and our Parks Trails Bond logo as well, so people know what, what form of funding that this project is funded from. And then, the top-right-hand-corner photo is the view from 65th, and if you're just going to look straight across, so it actually looks quite different now. It looks more like the far-left photo, but that just gives you a different angle of what this, what this trail will look like. And so, we're on reconstruction right now, and we're hoping to be completed with this one in the spring, summer of 2026. So these are some great photos here for the Future Riverfront Park. And so, we will be working with Sid and his Cora work, and specifically with the Timber Tectonics this year. So we will be working with architect students from the University of Oregon and the engineers from Oregon State University. And what they are tasked with this fall is to essentially build and design some park features for us. And so, the first one is, we'll have them design and build like a park shelter out of sustainable materials. And then, the second, the second feature will be like a boat kayak rental area, and so it'll be made out of sustainable materials, and they present their final project to us in December, the early December. And so, we'll either go down Eugene, or they'll come up to us and essentially present what they've designed for us. And the idea with that is, we'll eventually, once we have our design firm onboard, we will take the students' work and ask the firm to build upon that and design park features with that design in mind, along with the rest of the park. And then, of course, we were able to take these students out on a tour a few weeks ago of the six acres, and so, we were able to get a picture with them in front of the big blue sign, take them over to just throughout, through the six acres, so they can get a better idea of where they are and what they're designing or to help design. And so, that was a really great experience, and just to see the students' faces light up with just what they get to be a part of. And I know if you have heard this already, but most of the year, the ducks and the beavers are rivals, but in this case, we're really excited to be part of something where we get to combine specializations from both schools and create something really innovative and forward-thinking. And so, really looking forward to seeing what these students can, can bring, and really excited to work with them as well. And then, you might see Emma from Teapark in the top-left-hand corner of the presentation. And so, Dustin decided like, hey, let's get behind, you know, out of our computers or in our meeting rooms and get on the water. So we took Teapark and Arts Advisory Committee, along with our Twalton Riverkeeper Partners, and we got into the water off of the new trail boat launch off of 99, and we paddled all the way to the Future Riverfront Park. And so, we were able to stop at a few other boat launches within the city, but it was really great to get, you know, not only us staff, but our advisory committee members, just a different view. And so, that was really fun, and it was a really great experience, and Twalton Riverkeepers obviously did a really great job just facilitating that day for us. And so, next up for just Riverfront Access is, we have decided as a city to go out for an Owners Rep RFP. And so, this Owners Rep will represent the city from some pre-planning through getting a design firm onboard, through construction, closeout, and up into the ribbon cutting. And so, we will be posting this RFP for the Owners Rep in early November, and hopefully we'll have one on after, soon after the new year. And so, we plan to have a design firm then on, hopefully, you know, a little bit before spring, and then we'll start community engagement in summer of 2026 for this park. Our last area of the Parks and Trails Bond funds is the Athletic Field Improvements. And so, there are two parts to this Athletic Field area. There is the upgrade to the existing athletic fields within our park system, and then we have the partnership with the Tiger Twalton School District. And so, regarding the partnership, you'll see, or you'll see in the right-hand photo, that was our very first community engagement meeting with TTSD and local sports groups. And we concluded that at the end of last year. And so, as a reminder, we went through each site, each school within the city of Twalton, and each park in the city, and we ranked them on a scale between one and four, with one being the least feasible and four being the most feasible. And the criteria we used, just as an example, were things like topography, if we needed to have a traffic study because of the increased activity. We took into consideration parking capacity, utilities, or any existing just benefits to the site that could be useful just in our scoring. And so, at the end of that, after all the scores were submitted, Twalton Elementary came in as the number-one spot. And so, after that, we decided internally to do a little bit more research. And so, what you see on the screen with the mooses, we invited GIS to kind of help us out to do some more research in the sense of just proximity and access to the location, and not just necessarily what the community votes. And so, the top-left corner, you'll see that the schools, the Twalton Schools are shaded in blue, and the parks are shaded in green. And so, GIS, we had them split the city up into four quadrants with the, with the center where the two lines meet as the very center of the city. And so, as we can see again here, Twalton Elementary is in the very center, which is really great, but we know that we needed to take population into account and population density. And so, we asked GIS if they could split the city up into four quadrants again, but consider the population as well. And so, as you can see, Twalton Elementary, yes, it's in the middle, but it also tends to be, it's in the area where we're mostly populated in the city of Twalton. And so, we have these two data points from two different research components, which lead us to still believe that Twalton Elementary is the best location to create and build a multi-use sports facility to increase capacity for baseball, softball, football, lacrosse, and soccer. And so, currently, we are just in more of the research phase with Tiger Twalton, so we're just looking at some cost estimates. We'll do a feasibility study. There's still some things to figure out there, but Twalton Elementary is the one we are seriously looking at as a possibility. And then, we have the second part of the Athletic Field Improvements, which is the upgrades to our existing facilities. And so, as you know, they are a little outdated, maybe the fences need to be a little bit higher, and so, that phase will come to where we make sure everything is up to complacency and dugouts during, are enclosed, and that we have ADA access and ADA drinking fountains. And so, the timing of both those phases, one or two, we're still talking about it. They don't necessarily need to like happen one before the other necessarily, but more updates to come regarding timing on that one. So this year, we have decided to take the utility fee and replace the playground at Twalton Community Park. And so, what we did a few months ago is, we had Ross Recreation and Buell Recreation, two playground vendors, present their design ideas to Teapark. And so, after those two presentations, Teapark preferred to go with Burke and Buell Recreation. And so, what we wanted to do with this one in particular, because it's in Twalton Community Park, just really the downtown heart of the city, was instead of Buell and Burke creating three different designs and then have the community choose, we wanted to break it down even further. And so, for each week of camp, we had different easels with like four different types of spinners, four different kinds of towers, 10 different kinds of colors, different rockers, including some inclusivity ones, and the, we asked the children to place the sticker on their favorite one. And so, we did that for every week of camp, including Viva at Twalton. And so, as you can see, we had over 400 children participate in the summer's community engagement. And so, the renderings you see here, even the mint color gray that I think is coming back into style, this is what the children have chosen. And so, what is also really neat about this space is the synthetic turf. And so, you'll see the river along with some Douglas fir trees and pine trees. And so, we know from Sid's Cora work and that community engagement, that Twalton really identifies with the natural habitat of, of the city. And so, we wanted to incorporate that and pull that over to our parks, since it's really just a connection piece to the Future Riverfront, along with the downtown area. And so, there's still some kinks to figure out, because we need to consider park maintenance in this decision, too, because there are difference, you know, there are a lot of seams with all those trees. But what you see here, the theme, the colors, the trees may be a little bigger, there might be less, but this is what we plan to go out to construction for this spring, in April. And so, we've increased the capacity to over 200 children with this playground, and Dustin was able to acquire a grant for $100,000. So we're essentially getting a million-dollar playground for quite a bit less, or almost a million dollars for quite a bit less. And so, yeah, we hope to get out in April for this construction of this project. And then, we have the ARPA-funded projects. And so, the Los Casitas, the one that we've all been waiting for to be completed for a while, you can see a group photo of us up in the five-to-12-year-old playground, play structure on the far-right-hand side. And so, we decided to take the department heads, along with a few other key, important people who have made all, not only Los Casitas, but all of our projects a success, out to Los Casitas, or just giving them the first kind of behind-the-scenes look of what that space looks like. And so, we showed them, you know, the new ADA ramp, that basketball court in the bottom-right-hand corner that's noise-canceling, and really just as a thank you for just everything that they do to support Parks and Recreation, because we know that without them, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. And so, we would just want to take a group photo up there, including Dustin's dog. And so, you'll probably see that, that photo floating around there for sure, but we're really happy with, with Los Casitas, and it's slated to be done with construction open sometime in December, January. And so, we'll be working with Betsy, who is the liaison for that neighborhood, to work on a ribbon cutting. Data's to be determined on that one, but we'll make sure to get that out, that information out to you as well, once we know it. And then, the other ARPA project is the Basalt Creek Linear Park between Autumn Sunrise and the Affordable Housing Units. And so, again, this is a two-phase park. And so, what you see now in the rendering is just basic eight-foot-wide trail with landscaping and some bushes, and a mini plaza. And so, the idea is to get this one out to construction in the late spring or early summer, with just this basic rendering right here, and then when the eventual occupancy of that Basalt Creek area is a lot more occupied, then we would like to go out with, you know, to community, community engagement, and then have them choose all those specific amenities, kind of just solicit as potential features in kind of the bottom of the rendering. And so, yep, hoping to get this one out for, out in the spring, summer. And so, since the bond and the park utility and a few grant projects, this is a list of all the projects that we've completed since 2023. And so, I wanted to take the time and thank you. Thank council, thank Teapark and Arts Advisory for advocating for Parks and Rec and for what we do and for what we believe in. It wouldn't be possible without your support and the community's support for us to, for us to have at least four projects that we complete on top of everything else, everything else since, for the last three years. And so, just, we have a few photos on the right of just a few of our team members out there, just doing some playground checks, and a few of our playgrounds, that's, that's been revamped. And so, it's, it's a lot of projects that you see here, but we also, you know, are excited for all the new ones, too, that are, that are to come. And then, I guess before I get to the Q and A, again, just wanted to thank everyone for their time and their support, and can't do it without the team, and just thank you for everything, and appreciate you, your patience and listening to us about all of our park project updates.
Any questions or comments? Councilor Gonzalez?
So thank you very much for this update. I had been wondering about all of the various projects happening, so it's very nice to see them all coming, some, well, some come to a close. Some of the subjects that I've been constantly talking about when it comes to parks is maintenance, okay? These parks, these playgrounds are high-maintenance, okay? And in the past, we as a city have not set dollars to maintain these parks. Instead, we've just burdened the future with these expenses. And so, we've been very vocal about this, specifically around Los Casitas, that artificial turf and all the pine trees around it, it's gonna, the pine trees are gonna be exfoliating massive of, of kinds of pine needles, massive maintenance. Within a couple of years, that artificial turf will be sponge moss mold. So can you speak to me a little bit about what those plans are to sustain this for the future, for a long time, under maintenance, please?
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to take that one. Yeah, so we understand that, you know, from a maintenance perspective, especially with playgrounds, there's, there's a lot that goes into them. It's really easy to build something nice and then walk away from it and come back five years later, and it's in disarray. So from the start, one thing that we have started doing is, Los Casitas was the first one, and Twalton Community Park will have a playground audit, an independent third-party auditor comes in and makes sure that everything on that playground passes in a CPSI certified playground safety inspection audit. And then, what that audit allows us to do is start from a 100% guaranteed spot with a maintenance plan. And then, Tom and his team have put together, you know, a routine maintenance plan to go out there regularly and, and check things, which historically hasn't been done. With the turf, it will, it will take increased blowing, it will take increased sweeping, you know, motorized brooms on the end of weed eaters, things like that. Unit, sorry, chips, EWF wood chips require consistent raking. So the maintenance load on playground chips is not dissimilar from the playground, the maintenance load on unitary turf. Playground chips are immediately out of compliance once somebody swings and disrupts them. So there is a maintenance load on both, and it's, it's understanding for us to make sure that we put the resources towards taking care of it. And one of the ways that we are looking to do that is with improving the equipment that we have to take care of it, right? Using gas-powered or electric equipment to sweep it on a regular basis, and being out there, being present, and not letting things go into default mode and not take care of them for years at a time.
So one follow-up question.
Yep.
On the wood chips, and I didn't prep for this question, you may not know the answer to this, but there is specific requirements on safety depths for these playground chips.
Yeah.
So when you're saying that it's automatically rake, I mean, the depth is almost 18 inch, 16, between 16 and 18 inches, so if one swoop with the feet, it's not compliant.
Yeah, that, that's, and that's the reason that, especially with a, with a very busy playground like Twalton Community Park, like it's, it's, it's an advantageous maintenance move for us and liability move to move away from wood chips, because under every swing set, every slide, you see those, those divots, it doesn't matter where you go. And if you walk around a playground and look, every post on the playground should have a sticker on it that has a wood chip depth, and if they're doing it right, you shouldn't see it. And if it's too deep, then the slide is out of compliance, because the fall height to the end of the slide can cause legs to hang up and things like that. So, well, wood chips are great, and they're a low cost, they typically get used because they're a low-cost barrier of entry. They have a significant maintenance load, they're replaced yearly. We've actually dumped two, two different rounds of three or four dump trucks in TCP since I got here in February, just because of the amount of material that goes out and chews and kind of sponges down into the ground underneath. So it's not a, turf represents a more, a higher upfront cost, but it also represents true inclusivity and accessibility. Wood chips meet the definition of the ADA rules, but they don't meet the intent. A wheelchair user in wood chips can't get anywhere. One of the things in this playground that we're really excited about is Buell has a 360 slide, so a wheelchair user can wheel up to the bottom of the slide, get out of their chair if they can transfer, and they can go up instead of stairs, there's a ramp that goes up. They can go up the ramp, over, and then down the slide, and then back over and up the ramp, so they never really have to disengage from the playground and their friends. Where a lot of times with wood chips, we're way off maintenance now, but, but you see a user, you know, kind of get out of their chair, move through the playground, and then come down, and then their chair is over where their provider is. So we really looked at ways to make this park as inclusive as we can for as many people as we possibly can, and that will come with more maintenance, but it also comes with an understanding that we need to prioritize certain types of maintenance over other types of maintenance or the resources for maintenance. And we're, we're getting our head wrapped around the ways to do it better, more efficiently, all, all over our park system.
Thank you for that response, I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilor Sacco.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you. You know, we're happy to have you come and present your slides, and just thank you for all the work, and you make it very easy to advocate for the parks, knowing that it's in such good hands, so thank you for all your work, greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions.
Fire away.
My first one's, you know, the biggest chunk of money was allocated to the Athletic Fields, and it sounds like we're doing the feasibility study on Byram, but when, when could you envision, I'm not holding you to the fire here, but when can you envision something actually happening there?
Yes, so Kira and I have had a lot of conversations about the way we time these out, and the really big project that we have to figure out the total cost of the bond out of is that potential partnership with TTSD. That, that kind of drives the, the actual ability for us to expand capacity, right? Add additional fields versus improve the fields that we have with turf and lighting, which has, it has capacity add, but it's fractional compared to an entire field or complex, right?
Right.
Where you put in an additional soccer field, that's a 100% add over turf, which gets you, you know, some rainy weather days or some evenings with lights. We're getting close to the understanding what that project could look like and some rough order of magnitude with cost, and once we know those, we'll be able to go into that first, that other phase that Kira talked about with safety improvements, largely improving our backstops, improving ADA, bleacher safety, lights. So you saw the lights at TCP in one of the pictures, so that was one of those ones that we knew we could do. Kira has sourced new bleachers for IBAC, we didn't have IBAC, sorry. Emma, Emma scolded me the other day. We got your back at IBAC. So we got bleachers, and so, the current bleachers at IBAC don't have backs on them, so they're, they're a fall concern. We were able to get them on a state contract, and then Kira worked with our maintenance team, and our maintenance team's actually gonna build them in the shop this winter. It's a great rainy-day winter project, so shout out to the maintenance team, that probably saves the city, you know, $20,000 in contractual labor to build these bleachers. So we're, we're getting things out as we can, and the, the other arm, that safety improvement on backstops, dugouts, drinking fountains, will come as soon as we understand the price of that bigger project, and then we'll start that, that other project of, of safety improvements at all of the Athletic Fields that we can get to, which should be the majority of them, if budget stays like it looks. You know, maybe summer, fall of next year, right? We gotta time it with sports and things like that, and the weather windows, and try to be not overly disruptive with athletics, but also not miss our weather window. When I left Wilsonville, we put lights up in November, so that's also problematic, right? So we gotta try to time it. But I, I would say in the next year, we'll start to see some really big things move in the athletics realm, both in the, the properties that we currently steward and some potential new projects as well.
And I'm gonna pick on Byram still, because I walked my dog by there, and if we move forward, that, you know, those lovely dandelions that are there all summer, will that be negotiated with the school district who has to?
At Byram?
Yes.
Or Twalton?
No, Byram, that field is just a field of flowers.
So we have, we've talked to the school district about Byram, and there's a number of reasons that Byram doesn't work for the larger project that we're, we're embarking on.
Oh, you're talking about Twalton Elementary?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, those are field, never mind.
Yeah, yeah, the Byram field has, has some pretty significant grading issues.
Right, okay.
As well as it's a field of flowers, which it's a lot harder to take something that has been kind of given back to nature in some senses.
It's nice to walk your dog there.
Yeah, it is. Twalton Elementary has a, a pretty flat grade, it's about two-and-a-half acres, it has an existing parking lot, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I was mixing up the schools.
It's all right.
And then, my other question is on the Riverfront Park, which is so exciting, but I'm, are you coordinating with Sid and the Downtown Revitalization Project, so like you get this feedback of what's wanted, but we make sure it ties into, I'm sure you are, but I just wanted to hear you speak about it a little bit.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, yeah. We, we've met with Sid a, a number of times, formally and informally, and are working very closely with that project. The, the really great part of it is, is that the work that Sid's gonna embark on to kind of do that placemaking, and like, we want this bench and that light and this thing and this storm grate, like we went on a field trip with Sid to Universal Plaza and Tigard, and then Millennium Plaza and Lake Oswego, just to kind of get a sense of these like centralized placemaking parks. And Sid was pointing to like, oh, do you see this area drain over here? It's, it's this kind, and I picked it because it has a 50-year maintenance life, and it looks good in this area, right? Like all the- Like, all these great reasons. And so, we're gonna get to a spot where those kind of things have to be solidified through code, and that's where we can take the information that we know and then move our project forward using those same kind of amenities and features and kind of move them together. And that starts with, with some of the work that, that Kira was talking about with the Timber Tectonics Program, that Sustainable City a Year Program. That's, that was Sid's, that's Sid and Cora's kind of brainchild, and we were really fortunate to jump in there and get some, some draft models of park buildings that then we can take to design and, you know, bring kind of an innovative, long-term solution approach. So, yeah, we're, we're working very closely with Sid on Twalton Community Park, Lake at the Commons, kind of what that whole downtown area looks like and how it interacts as a public space, both in parks and around them.
And then, lastly, just thank you so much for all your hard work in the whole Parks Department, because, I mean, this bond only passed a couple of years ago, and we've seen a lot of projects come to fruition.
Yeah, Rich and Kira have been very busy, they don't let moss grow under their feet. It's been, it's been outstanding to watch. We have a lot of great work ahead and a lot of, a lot of ribbons to cut and a lot of things to celebrate as a community, but we're in a very fortunate spot to be doing those kind of things.
Well, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you all, have a good night.
Next, we have a request for council presentation from the Sober Grad Night Committee. Do we have a representative from that committee here?
No, they just submitted their request, like, whether they want a presentation request for your consideration.
Okay, so that's just for our consideration?
If you consider whether you want them to come and make their presentation.
Oh, to consider if they want to come and make their presentation, okay. Any comments on that or thoughts?
Can, can you explain what that is? I mean, what is the, I'm sorry, what are we proclaiming?
So, they're not proclaiming, in the packet they, they're asking for, to be able to come make a presentation to council to request funds for their sober grad night.
Okay.
God, I remember now, thank you, sorry.
I can ask a first question, is, and this is for Dawn. They referred to the balloon festival and some funds from that being paid from the city of Tigard for this presentation, and they suggested we use the pumpkin regatta. I don't know that we make any money off the pumpkin regatta, we don't charge $17 for parking or anything, so where would these funds come from if we were to give them anything?
It would have to come from, at this point, any of your existing funding. Put it into the budget for next year or add it as part of your outside agency grants, it would be a potential, including in that funding. I'd have to look at, I don't know enough about the background of this, so that would be the question. I think the question for you tonight is if it's something you want to even have them come and give you a presentation on to be considered.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes, so I understood their example of giving us ideas on some revenue sharing, but you're right, we don't charge for the, we don't charge for that, so I applaud them, but this is something we can take into consideration, this could be an outside agency grant, perfect. Just, I mean, I like the concept all around, that's all good stuff, so that, I wouldn't see a problem for this receiving those revenues, is we all consider it as a grant for them.
So, I guess, go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, I also was wondering if we can, if they're 501(c)(3) or something that we can consider in the grants, when we provide grants in the future.
We already allocated all of the funds for this fiscal year.
Right, for next year, yeah, I agree.
So, they would, the funding that they're seeking is for, it would be this fiscal year for the grad night party, so we've already allocated the funds, and I don't think they're 501(c)(3), but they probably did partner with the school district to receive that sort of thing.
So, I, I mean, there's two questions, and right now, we're being asked if we want to hear from them at a future meeting, so I guess, everybody who would want to hear from them, just raise your hand or say aye. I mean, it's not saying we're giving them funding, it's saying we're willing to listen to them.
Exactly, I think if we have a group of community members asking to be seen and heard, that our answer should be an easy yes to that.
Okay.
So, have them come back at a future meeting, okay? We'll get with them and have them scheduled to come and present during one of your work sessions.
Counsel President. Go ahead.
I think it would behoove us to make sure that we have some proactive plans for them to, you know, move forward with. So, if we could make sure that, that we're, you know, we're in a position to do that, 'cause they are not a 501(c)(3), they are seeking their 501(c)(3) status, and they do have several nonprofit agencies that they partner with that would be willing to support that, but, yeah, thanks.
So, there were two questions, but one is if they can come speak, I don't mind if they come speak, it doesn't either.
The question tonight is just if we're willing to listen to them.
They wanna hear the presentation, yeah, yeah, I mean, it doesn't really.
And then, I think what Counselor Hill you're saying, which is my question too, is when they come, if, at that point, we rediscuss if there are funding options available.
At the moment, or?
At, when they come.
I like to process things before I make, like, I like to hear them, but then, at that moment when they present to us, I'm sorry, I wanna be clear what is expected of me when they come.
The, my understanding, my apologies, I did not look at, this was off, got off my radar, and my apologies for not being more prepared for this. My understanding was for them to come and present their idea, there would be no decisions being made that night, particularly because there is no funding available on the current budget. We have given away the outside agency grants for this year, so for next year, if they wanted to apply, then they would have to make sure they qualified into the 500(c)(3) and all that. On the regatta side, yes, it is not anything we do make money on, I think there are some concessions that is for the Youth Advisory Council and for their activities, so there's not anything that we make as a, any kind of profit that we'd have monies available to partner with anybody on.
And on the presentation, like, you wouldn't make a decision, you'd give staff direction, and then you would come back and get, so you would just hear their presentation, you'd have to have to deal with it, and then staff would come back with whatever, Dawn probably would do with money.
So, at this point, we're just saying we're willing to listen to them.
I understood that part, but there was another expectation, so I wanna make sure that I'm expected, yeah, because I wanna prepare myself, alright, thank you.
We would be seeking any direction from that presentation from you that evening.
Yeah, so, for me, the urgency was it's this year, so, obviously, yes, we wanna hear them, but it'll be something for next year. Is that, is that what we're talking about, that we wanna listen to them, but if they're looking for us to say yes, yea, nay for funds, I mean, they obviously can propose for next year sometimes, so.
It would say that they could come and present what they're asking, then it would be up to the council to give staff any direction coming out of that, and as we've talked, there are not current funding available in any of our funds to do so, but that would be something that if the council wanted direction that evening, that would be up to council to direct staff coming out of that meeting for any, whatever your direction is at that point.
Understood, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have, oh, next, we have, we could go over our agenda review, we have the Pledge of Allegiance, this is Counselor Reyes, and then we have two proclamations, one is the Red Ribbon Week, which Counselor Hill you will do, and then a proclamation about Native American Heritage Month with Counselor Reyes is going to read, and now we can move on, we're so ahead. We could do council communications, so Counselor Sacco.
Thank you. We met as the idea committee last Monday, and I don't really have a lot to report, 'cause we reviewed what they're coming to speak on in council next month, so I don't wanna ruin any surprises, but they will be here next month. I did wanna communicate that we do continue, and since we're reading the Native proclamation tonight, that we do continue those discussions about, very thoughtful discussions about how we do wanna honor the Native peoples, so really excited to see that proclamation tonight, and we did let them know that we're reading this tonight as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, I have not had any meetings in the last two weeks, thanks.
We met twice, two nights in a row, the 22nd and the 23rd with the CCAA Committee, which is the City Council Advisory Committees, where we assigned, just for those who are wondering what that means, it means that we interview people from the community who apply to volunteer some of these committees, and then we assign them to different committees. So, if you're interested, please go to our website or contact our cities, so you can see what's out there and participate. But it was a wonderful two meetings, we had a lot of people in our community applying, and it's always wonderful to see that, and it's always, it's always wonderful to, sorry, I'm being interrupted here, sorry. Thank you.
Counselor Gonzalez?
So, it's been very slow on the meeting side, but I did attend the ribbon cutting for the Twalton Sherwood, that was pretty awesome. It's pretty amazing to shave off that much time, and when we talked, when I sent this information out, people were just amazed, 'cause they're seeing it and they're feeling it, which is amazing. The other one I went to, I attended the Mixer over in West Lynn, it was very fascinating to hear some of the plans that they have for that Willamette Falls and all the various excitements, but also the funding that's needed to get that project to pass, and there's a couple of tribes that are working through those processes, so that was very nice to see, and we got to see the historical building there in West Lynn, which, a building that I, since I've been, lived in Oregon for 26 years, have always wanted to go into, now we've got the chance to go into. It's a full conference room section, so that's all I have.
Thank you. I can't remember the date, but I went, Dustin and Kira took me on that new Nyberg Trail connection before there was pavement, and that was really interesting to see, and it's pretty exciting that we'll have a connection, so everybody doesn't have to go down Sagert all the time. Then, on the 23rd, I went to the Greater Portland Inc. Economic Summit, and the focus was on building economic relations with foreign partners, particularly Asian partners, so that was interesting. Then, oh, Counselor Hillier and I, on the 28th, went to the, we were at the Grange Gathering Market in the city booth, and we got a little nicer weather than the mayor and Counselor Gonzalez. That was really kind of fun. And then, the 2nd through the 4th, I went to the League of Oregon Cities Conference in downtown, and the mayor and Counselor Brooks were there, and one of the most interesting sessions I went to was, they talked about, you know, the different perspectives of the different generations and how they look at things and how you have to reach out to them, and they had this interesting fact that, like, people that run for elected office tend to have, disproportionately tend to be kind of in between two generations, and were participants banned and debated in high school, so, I met all three, so, I must agree. Banned, anyway, that was really interesting, and then, oh, last weekend, I got to start the regatta run, the Rotary's Regatta Run, and I got to thank all the sponsors, introduce the Twalton High School Marching Band, and Wolfie, and then a judge of kids' costume contest, which was a blast, and I wanted to thank Julie and Heidi, they, I don't know how many sleepless nights they have putting that together, it, it's just amazing how they pull it off and how well-run it is. And then, we had a meeting with the Downtown Revitalization Committee, there was an outreach to the community and all the UOFOS, or not all of the students, but a big chunk of them were, and the professors gave presentations, and it was really exciting, their energy and excitement about our city, and they're just talking to them the different way they see it than we do, probably, and so, I'm really excited about this project moving forward. And then, of course, we had the CCAA meetings and met a bunch of new amazing people in our community. That's it for now, so we've got quite a few minutes till our meeting starts.
Council President Pratt, would you like to hear the manager's report?
Oh.
We have some really wonderful things going on, so.
I'd really like to hear them.
And you stole part of my thunder about the Sustainable City Year Program, so that was on the 16th, about 40 to 50 people attended, which was the mix of the downtown revitalization CAC and the TAC members, the elected officials that Council President Pratt mentioned, her and the mayor, there was also a representative from Congresswoman Salinas' office, as well as faculty and students. There are three classes, or a number of classes coming up as part of this project in the falls, the downtown site analysis, design, transportation, timber tectonic, park structure design, and the market study. This winter, there'll be an architecture design studio class that the students will be putting, going forward, and in the spring, we'll be talking about floodplain and stormwater study. So, there's a lot of excitement about the downtown revitalization that this is tying in with, and so, Sid and the rest of the group is putting together a really nice program that I think you'll see a lot coming forward on. You guys also mentioned the pumpkin regatta, we had over 20 pumpkins making their way into the water and through the water, staff is estimating about 15,000 to 17,000 attendees, and they'll have final numbers from their geo-fencing consultant in about a month. Our own Dustin Shul, who didn't want to stick around to be talked about and winning his heat, but we have an award winner on staff from that. Speaking of the regatta, now that may be over, but the shrunken regatta is still going on through the end of the month at the library, so go check that out, there's a lot of cool and exciting and interesting pieces part of that. Staff interviewed consulting firms for the Twalton Sherwood Road Boones Ferry Railroad Crossing Grade Separation Project. They always give me the tongue twisters when I'm sitting up here. The consultant's gonna be developing and analyzing conceptual design options, including a no-build, a small build, which is things like just turn lanes, and the big build options such as a bridge or tunnel. Then, with these results in mind, they're gonna work together with staff and the community towards a community consensus on a preferred alternative that we could then advance for further study and potential funding opportunities. Over at the Poll Center last week, we served over 100 meals, and on Tuesday, there was a lunch and learn that was focused on grief that brought in 50 community members, and Friday was a great collaboration with the library. Doug, our trivia expert at the library, held trivia, and there were again 50 community members attended that day as well. Also in the library, the Friends of the Library are hosting their semi-annual book and media sales, they'll be on Friday, November 7th from 3:00 to 6:00, and Saturday, November 8th from 10:00 to 4:00. Lastly, I handed out to all of you our budget in brief document that was just put together by William Sullivan on my staff. So, what's included in this is some pages on what's, you know, kind of highlights from our budget, has pieces about your 2030 vision and your priorities and the objectives that are in the budget, in the budget this year that tie to your council priorities, that we talk a little bit about where the money comes from, so our revenue sources, things that we spend the monies on and where it goes, and then some community facts and some Twalton at a glance, and just a number of just exciting things that are going on, fun, the community making a difference, the CIP in this, Parks Bond Fund update. But the one piece that I want to point out that was new this year that William put together was this, a day in the life. If you see it on the bottom there, he put together, meeting the Mastodon family that lives here in Twalton and use our city services for many tasks throughout the day, and so, he put together what's a typical day of the Mastodon family, and what it highlighted, there was a number of the things that go into your normal everyday life, that you don't realize you're getting a service from the city or ties in with all the things that cities, the city offers that a family may not think about. So, he had a little fun with that, we actually got the idea from a city in California to do a day in the life, and then he took it from there and created this Mastodon family for that. So, kind of some, just, I give it to you to see what has been put out, we did some social media around this, it is on our website along with our budget, so it's just an opportunity to take that 200 and something page budget document and put it in something a little more easily read that people wanna do, and fun. Council President Pratt, that is all I have, thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you, Dawn, our work sessions adjourned, and we'll be back in about eight or nine minutes for council meeting.